All right, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:00 PM. I'd like to -- there are six commissioners present. James and Sherri, can you hear us? Actually, there are seven commissioners present, so. Hello, Linda.
Hi, how are you?
All right, so in that case, I'd like to go ahead and call on to order the regular session of -- for Monday, April 5th, for the Planning Commission. First item is approval of minutes. Staff, is there anything to add or comments we need to make to the February 1 minutes?
No.
Good, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or concerns or issues with the minutes from February 1st? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I salute that they be accepted.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, so I'll do a -- thank you. Do a by-name vote. Linda?
I wasn't here, sir.
Huh? Oh, have you had a chance to look at the February minutes?
For the minutes? I wasn't here last.
Okay. Right, I'll pass. Sherri, accept?
Accept.
Thank you. Claude?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
James? Thank you. And Joseph?
Yes, sir.
And I vote yes as well. And James, we can see your lips moving, but we can't hear anything from your end.
No, we can't hear you.
So if you want to work on that while we get into the next issue.
James, if you have any comments or questions as we go, you can type them into the chat, and I'll read them if we can't get your microphone going.
Good.
Okay.
All right, so we have three items for new business. So note, number two has been postponed or pushed back until next month, so number two or --
Yes, number two has been the rezoning request, 2021-08 rezoning for 7-Eleven Marshall Street, which is the Cushing Memorial Hospital property, has been continued to the May 3rd Planning Commission meeting, so we will see that then.
And we want to do number three first, if we could?
Yep, we're going to do number three first. The Branches Third Edition Preliminary Plat and Jackie Porter will handle that.
Evening, everybody. All right, and this is a preliminary plat for Branches Edition Phase 3. And the subject property is owned by Riley Development. The application is -- the applicant is requesting for a 46 lot, lot preliminary plat, and the property is currently vacant and zone, R16 High Density Single Family Residential District. The subject property is 25.09 acres in size and is currently developed. The site lies between South 20th Street and Tonganoxie Drive. The plat consists of 46 residential lots, averaging size about 15,763 square feet. The maximum lot, lot size in this plat is 39,235 square feet, and the smallest lot is 8,400 square feet. Also included are associated utility easements, open, open space slash drainage easements and emergency accesses. Um, the deep, the original proposed plat was revised, reviewed by DRC at the December 10th meeting. The items discussed at the time of the December meeting included the two access points needed for fire, and the first access point is to the east, and the second point is through track B there on, there on the south. And then other items were the need for an HOA, and it was also noted the need for addressing, address, addressing threatened and endangered species. And the proposed plat that you are seeing today is a modified version that was reviewed by the DRC. Um, this, but was reviewed, was given out for any comments of the departments to review after the fact when we received it in March. Um, stormwater and sewer plans have been submitted. The public, public works are reviewing those plans. Public improvement plans will be finalized and approved by public works prior to the recording of the final plat. The fire marshal has been in coordination with engineering company in regards to the two fire accesses dedicated by track A and B by the two, phases two and three. Um, and that is all.
Okay, and the applicant is here as well, if you have any questions for him.
All right, so questions of staff? All right, and then questions of the applicant? I mean, a question that I happen to have was, does the applicant actually own the property to the east? And so actually, so drop, you know, putting in an access point off of, I'm assuming, 20th Street into the property, is that going to be an issue? And I guess, since the applicant's here, if you want to go ahead and go to the microphone, identify yourself and please let us know.
Here.
You can sit here up there where we are. Okay. Up here.
Mike Riley with Riley Development, thank you for your time. No, we do not own the property to the east. That lot is owned by Westar or Evergy. We have discussed with them the opportunity of possibly putting in a construction road, but that does not appear to be an opportunity at this time. They, they don't want to be crossing that property. So, we, we actually do not own any other ground in the area.
I believe it's their plans to construct a substation on that property, and I believe 2025 is when we've heard. And the thought is that once they get that area carved out for their substation, then the rest of that land would potentially be open for purchase and/or development from somebody else. So have the possibility for that connection through at that time, once Evergy constructs their substation there.
So then the access will be through section B then, or plat, or the part B?
Yes. So we were not the original developer of the branches. My understanding is that the original developer left that tract B as a secondary site to get to this back 25 acres. We are maintaining that, and as you'll see, it flows through to, to the lot on, on our side of the subdivision as well. I can't tell if that's tract C or A or --
Yeah, or there.
Right there. We've actually talked, our engineering firm has talked with emergency services about possibly doing a turf road there, something that would hold up to emergency vehicles, but would not be utilized on a daily basis by daily traffic. Quite honestly, the original design of that, in my opinion, left, left some, left a little bit to be desired. The two homes on each side of track B were there when we purchased it. The grade is such that if we put a hard surface road in there, they're going to have probably some real problems in their yards. So our thought was to maintain that as a grassy area for emergency vehicles only. We would create a subbase and then turf over that so that in the event of emergency need, we would have some signage, dedicate that area for emergency use only. But that on a daily basis, it would not be accessed or utilized. We're still working through that with, with emergency services, I believe.
Other questions from commissioners?
There's a comment on the fact of public works, Mike, on the Northwest cul-de-sac may need some changes, and what does that alluding to?
As far as changes in the cul-de-sac, we, we made some changes in this design from the original site plan that was presented to DRC, and it was really based off of the depth of the sanitary sewer in that particular cul-de-sac. We're really deep there. And so I think our engineering firm made a little bit of change to that. That's why you also see some of the, some of the larger lots in that particular cul-de-sac. We're just trying to cut down on the common area space. The, the pond is, is there, it's, it needs to be improved. It's going to act as an amenity as well as a detention facility. But quite honestly, we were trying to cut down on some common area space.
Got it, thanks.
So are there no other questions? Since I guess we have three options, right? We can approve the preliminary plat, we can deny the preliminary plat, or we can table the issue for additional information consideration? Any other last thoughts or considerations, or I call for a motion? All right, call for motion?
I salute approval of this based on the fact of the history of the builder, of everything related to the, what's going on here, the meeting of the permits, I would salute this approval.
Thank you, so it's motion. Second, thank you very much.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sherri. All right, I'll do a roll call vote. Linda, approve, disapprove?
I second, yeah.
Okay, would you like to approve or disapprove the motion?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm not getting it on here, so.
No, I just started, I just started the voting by the commissioners, and so I'm going to start with you. Would you like to, will you approve the float? With the vote, it's been made and seconded, do you approve the motion?
Okay.
But it's time to vote, not the motion. Would you, would you vote for approval?
I'm sorry, I'm not getting it.
Okay.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Right, so now, now we're doing a roll call of all the commissioners.
I don't have anything else to ask.
Okay. Do you approve the approval of the plat? Approval of the plat?
Did you ask me about my vote? I'm sorry, I seem to be facing in and out.
Not yet, Sherri.
Not yet. So it was like, so it's been, the motions are made and seconded, and now I'm going to ask each commissioner whether they approve the motion or not.
I approve.
Thank you. Sherri? Sherri?
Yes, I approve it, yes.
Thank you. Claude?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
James? Got it, thank you. Joseph?
Yes.
Thank you. And I vote yes as well, so the, so we have approved the plat as briefed for 2021-10 S U B Branches Edition Number 3.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Mike.
All right, if we'll go on to the first item on our schedule.
Okay, so as you're all aware, for the past about 15 months, we've been working on an update to the comprehensive plan, and you all have been involved in that process through a series of meetings and then public participation efforts. And so Shelby Ferguson from Shaki is here tonight. You've got all the draft chapters in front of you. This isn't really meant to be a draft final document. Again, these are just kind of the chapters. This is going to be really the meat of the content, and then we'll have a kind of a final version of the, that final document to, to show you at the end, once the, any changes or revisions have been made. So Shelby's here tonight, she is going to kind of walk you through where we're at, go over the, the draft, and then we can have some discussion. So I will let her come up.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here this evening, and as Julie said, we've, we've been working on this process for over the last year, and we're excited to be here this evening and bring in to you the, the draft and having further discussions. You know, I know we've spoken, many of us, mostly virtual, I believe this is actually the first time that I've been in front of all of you in person, so that's really great to finally kind of put some faces to names and everything. So as she mentioned, I'm just going to walk through, the presentation this evening walks us through just where we're at within the process, and also just what the framework, what the framework of our process over the last 15 months or so has been. So we'll look at that comprehensive plan framework. We'll also then discuss, as she just handed out to you, some additional maps and things that were not included in your packet, but look at that future land use map, and then also look at coming to a consensus for the, the recommendation of adoption. So with that, where are we and how does it fit into the overall picture? So this is just a quick overview of what our process has been. Back in February, we started, February of 2020, we started with just our kickoff, you know, we really started meeting with city staff, having those conversations, looking at what engagement we were going to do, how we were going to approach engagement, especially through COVID. And then we moved on to our Phase 2, which really started looking at developing the story of Leavenworth. What are your current existing conditions, really gathering that data and putting that together, looking at maps, starting to engage additional staff, and then also having some discovery meetings of what the critical and key issues within the community are, and talking with the City Commission on, on those same points also. Then we started to move into the engage piece. This, we did push a little further, just that way, in hopes of trying to be able to engage in person. Unfortunately, we weren't really able to do a whole lot of engagement in person, but we did hold focus groups. Some of those were online and some were in person, in addition to the Planning Commission and City Commission joint workshops. So those were all done through meeting type of setting, and then also we had an on, online engagement platform, which I'll get into that a little bit, in a little bit, just of what those statistics from that, that website were. And then we also provided additional other engagement methods, which I'll, I'll kind of highlight here in a little bit also. But so that, that process went from July to December, and then really in October to March, we really started fine tuning that, you know, what we've heard, what we're hearing from the public, how, how do we address the critical issues and concerns that we've heard? And then really look at that market analysis and start drafting those planned chapters that you have before you this evening. And then that brings us to where we're at this evening, which is Phase 5, which is for the adoption and implementation piece of the comprehensive plan, and really just making sure that we have a full buy-in from you all and City Commission in what we've developed, making any edits that we need to, and hopefully getting that to, to be so that you all have a cohesive and concise plan that you all want to implement for the next 10 years. So, so then our engagement, what have your neighbors and friends had to say, and what do they desire for Leavenworth? So looking at that, I, I did provide to you in, in some of the handouts there is the full engagement report, so it shows what we've heard since October, and just some methods that we did use. As I mentioned, we did have that online engagement platform, and that ran from October to February, and that really allowed people to participate in survey tools, provide ideas on idea boards, and then start to have a conversation with each other about whether the ideas that other individuals within the community were something that others felt that they could see Leavenworth becoming. And then, as I mentioned, we had that focus group, we met four times, and, and within that, those provided in-depth feedback to shape the framework of the plan. We also had Project Kiosk and Business Flyers that we provided throughout the community. Those helped in driving people to the website, but they also offered a, a form of engagement to incentivize people to go to the website, but also participate in our community meeting that we held in January. We also allowed, had the option for people to download conversation kits, or also pick them up here at City Hall. Those provided activities to individuals to, to provide feedback and, you know, really start to look at the maps and dive into what areas of concern, or what, what do they see for their community in the next 10 years? And then also, we used yard signs to promote the community meeting. We held two of those in January, and they were both online, but we did put out 30 yard signs throughout the community, a lot of them in visible park areas or along high-traffic areas. And we did have a, a pretty high attendance for, for those. You know, we had registered for each meeting about 40 individuals, and then from that, we had, our first meeting, I believe, was about 25 to 30, and then after, the, the second one was much less, unfortunately, but still both very great conversations and a lot of information from both of those. So just looking at the, the Leavenworth 2030 site that we, we provided, that, like I said, ran from October to February. Overall, we had a total of just over 1,500 site visits in that time span. We had 118 individuals registered for, for the site, so they were the bulk of the people who were providing feedback to us and really participating in those activities. Within that, we had 145 engaged visitors, and what that means is that they actually provided feedback to the tools that were on, on the website. 338 people visited and clicked on information, but did not provide any specific feedback to any of the tools. And then we had 895 people who just clicked on the website, got information, read things, but didn't necessarily participate, but at least were aware of the process and had the ability to participate if, if they felt that they wanted to. So looking at just some quick demographics, the engagement for the site, we required them to register, we didn't ask for any personal information, but we did ask for just some general demographics, that way we could really get an understanding of if we were getting an inclusive snapshot of your community participating. So of those 118 individuals who signed up, 48 of them lived in Leavenworth, 32 of them live and work here, and then 10 of them live, work here, and own a business, and then six of them just work here. There were other categories, however, these are just the top four of the majority of the participants. We also found that the, the largest section of your community was age 35 to 54 that participated in the website. And then also, we found that by asking individuals what portion of the community they lived in, we actually got a pretty equal cross-section of your community responding. Areas three and four there, the middle of your community, were the most responsive. However, we did get an equal representation between one through one, two, five, and six, and then just three individuals from the fort that participated. And then just looking at, you know, what topics were most important to those people who were participating online, and the economy and jobs and the workforce were top, along with looking at the sense of community and then the transportation within, within the community, and then also really just preserving that historic and cultural resources that you have here as, as the first city of, of Kansas. And, and you'll see that here in a little bit with the goals and objectives, that was, those were very important pieces for the community as we, we spoke with them during the community meeting, and then also just from the website. So then just some of our activities on there, we had some mapping activities, one of them was, you know, what, what do you love about Leavenworth? You know, if, if you have a visitor, or if you have family, or if you yourself are just going out in the community, what is it that you love to go to do? What do you have to show someone to do? And so this is just a quick list of, of those individual places or things that people love to do within your community. A lot of them are some of your historic attractions, your parks, just even some of the general, you know, newer commercial that you have in the area. So these are, these are just kind of the, the top locations of, of things within the community that everyone loves. So then, as part of that Phase 2 discovery and analysis, we looked at the market, and so what does the market, existing data project for the population and housing demand future for the next 10 years and beyond? So just looking at your current population, you have a population of 36, just over 36,000. You're, you're fairly, fairly even when it comes to males, females, especially when you take out the population that is at Leavenworth Penitentiary, since they are included in that. We do factor that in, that that 54% does actually come down a bit, and therefore you have a fairly equal spread of male, female within that population. As for the population in Leavenworth and in the county, and also the KC Metro area, we, we see that population is increasing from 2010 to 2018, and that through the Mid-America Regional Council, which is the regional planning organization for the, the metro, they've projected, as you'll see there, that Leavenworth will have a, a growth of 32%, almost 33% by 2040, and then so on, about the same amount of percentage of growth for the county and also the, the metro area. So population is increasing over the last 10, 15 years, and then, you know, that it's, it's projected to continue to grow. Also that your households are pretty consistent from 2010 to 2018, that the, the size of it really hasn't changed all that much. The average family household has remained 3.21, and then the, the average household, or that's the family size, sorry, the average household size has just increased just, just a little bit from 2.54 to 2.61. So, so your household sizes are staying consistent also. So then, within our market analysis, we looked at the population growth and projections, and so what this one here is telling us is, so basically, the, the share of Leavenworth for the county, it peaked in 1980. Your share of population within the county was 61%, and then it has slowly decreased over time. So while the county is getting larger, your population has decreased some since the 80s and 90s, but we are seeing that there is a projection of, of the county population going up and also the city's population. However, this is a fairly aggressive projection and understanding of the county share from the Wichita State University, because in, in respect to checking it with the 2018 census data and estimates, it does show that the county was expected to have 83, 83,600 residents in 2019, and the, the census shows that there was about 3,000 less than that. So it is an aggressive projection, but it does give us an idea of, you know, within a certain percentage of what to expect. So then, moving on to that, looking at the rest of the surrounding counties, Johnson County and Douglas County are on the upward trend of moving forward with their growth through 2064. Leavenworth is steady, they're also continuing to move forward, and they are above the 22% average that the state of Kansas has over the next 50 years. So then, we, we look at just some scenarios, looking at more of aggressive scenario for growth, and then a low, low-growth scenario. And so within that, what, what we have here is that with a aggressive, higher-growth scenario, Leavenworth by 2030 will add just over 12,000 residents by 20, yes, by, by 2030, and then on the lower end, you'll see there that it actually maintains your population as, as it is currently. So you'd add about three, or about 600 residents by 2030, if you go with the lowest growth scenario. So looking at something there in the middle, you'd have about 41,000 as your population by 2030, with a, a mid-range growth scenario. So then, looking at housing population, what, what this is telling us is that the number of housing units in Leavenworth increased slightly from 2010 to 2018, that single-family attached accounts for 79% of the Leavenworth housing, housing stock, according to the 2018 American Community Survey through the census, and that multifamily makes up only 20% of the housing stock, and mobile homes accounts for 1%. So the accu- Um, so the occupancy remained the same at eleven percent from twenty-ten to twenty-eighteen. And then the occupied house, um owner-occupied housing accounts for forty-five percent of Leavenworth's housing units, which is a slight uh decrease actually from twenty-ten. Meanwhile, renter-occupied housing accounts for forty-four percent, um which is an increase of two percent from twenty-ten. So the increase in rental occupation, uh rental occupation reduced the rental vacancy um to seven percent um from twenty-ten. So what we're looking at is that you, you do have a large stock of, of single-family housing. Um, however, there is that, um starting to be that shift uh of having more rental um within the community. Um, so then looking at that, uh just looking at persons per household and those projections, uh currently what Leavenworth is showing to have is one point four two um in the two thousand twenties as a persons per household. Um, and then uh in, in twenty-thirty, it's projected uh that you'll have um, or sorry, that, that's for the, the county, um is one point four six. So it'll go up slightly for the county um from, from currently to twenty-twenty. And then also uh fairly consistent, it shows that the city is currently um two point six one, which is up uh from two point five four persons per household in twenty-ten. Uh, so what this tells us is that uh new households in Leavenworth would be smaller than today, um but they will get a little larger over time. So um, you know, as, as that population increases, um the, the household size will also um go up, but it is not going to go up significantly. So then looking at, again, similar to what we did with the uh population, uh we, we look at our housing projections with a, a high, middle and low growth scenario. Um, and what this shows us is that uh by twenty-thirty, uh the amount of housing needed would be uh twenty-two thousand seven hundred uh and it with, with a high growth scenario. Um, or it would actually only increase by needing about two hundred units um with the, the low growth scenario there. Um, so again, if you go with the middle range, you would be looking at adding about seventeen thousand more housing units um to Leavenworth in the next two decades. So just some key takeaways from this. Again, uh that the population projections for Leavenworth anticipate reaching the peak share um it once had in nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety, resulting in an increase of sixty-one thousand seven hundred residents at the high growth scenario. Um, if you look at the low scenario, um Leavenworth won't see much of a change. Uh, the population can expect that the county share piece of that, that they had in, in the eighties um will decrease from forty-four percent to thirty-five percent. So um your, your population with the low growth scenario is not expected to really go up. And then also the county itself is, uh will continue to grow, um therefore decreasing the, the, the city's share of that. Also, Johnson and Douglas and Leavenworth Counties anticipate a steady increase in population to twenty-twenty, twenty-sixty-four. Uh, meanwhile, Wyandotte County will have a steady decrease and then the state of Kansas will remain consistent with that twenty-two percent um average growth. Uh, your person per household will increase, but not significantly. And then the net new um housing unit range um will range from either the need for a hundred to thirteen thousand uh new units between twenty-twenty and twenty-thirty. So then looking at the framework, um just kinda how we've moved through the process, we, we always work through with a comprehensive plan. We work on establishing what the vision is, uh looking at, once we've established that vision, um where do we wanna be, what do we wanna be, how do we wanna get there? Um, we start to identify those goals and objectives. And that really starts to allow us to look at those critical questions that we identify with city staff of each topic, what is important for, for the community to grow and um be, become the vision that they, they desire? Um, how do we get there? Um, and so we, we establish goals and objectives. And then from that, we start to really look at strategies um and, and how you can obtain those goals and objectives. Uh, what local actions are necessary uh to, to get to the future um vision? And then we um start to develop policies also. We look at within that, um not just what, what collaborative or partnerships need to be taking place, but you know, what um, what code policies and adjustments are there? What um items within, within the uh land use piece um can be developed to help move the needle forward for the vision? So then, just a quick overview, this is the vision that um through our planning commission and uh, sorry, planning commission and city commission workshops, what we, we landed on is that Leavenworth will be a place people live, work and stay because of a diverse employment opportunities and economic growth, affordable housing in vibrant neighborhoods, connectivity with our city and the region, quality education, training and lifelong learning, accessible, quality healthcare, natural spaces for, and facilities for active living, outstanding public se- safety. So those are all just kind of those high-level talking points, but ultimately the vision is that it's um where people live, work and stay in Leavenworth because the residents and visitors value Leavenworth's unique history, destination and experiences. And uh we are unified, welcoming and committed to making Leavenworth the best city in the Midwest. Um, so that's where we started and that's what we have based uh moving forward uh all of our goals, objectives is how do we obtain uh this vision uh for, for you all by twenty-thirty? So then I'll, I'll jump in real quick. I know we've all seen them before, we've talked about them, so I, I'll go real quick and high-level through uh the community or the, the chapters of the plan and what those goals and objectives were. Um, if you do have any questions, feel free to just jump in and ask me right then um i- if you'd like. Um, so chapter one, we identify as community identity. This really looks at the, the sense of place, um you know, your historic and cultural uh resources, um what, what attractions you have and so on. Um, so for historic and cultural resources, um and just for this chapter in general, we have the same goal. It's preserve our welcoming and inclusive community that celebrates its past plans, past plans for its future and provides qual- uh opportunities for all people. Um, so one strategy for this is just to pr- continue to promote um historic resources and the values um of historic preservation. And then also look at those historic resources and assets and um create places that people wanna live in, work in and gather in, uh and also to uh have people visit more. And then also incentivize historic preservation. Those are all um three strategies that we see as how we can obtain that goal um of preserving an inclusive community. And I also forgot to mention, um I also handed out, it's just if you wanna follow along, it's everything that's in the presentation, but it also includes all of the local action steps that we would be, um that we're proposing to, to these strategies. That way uh you kinda have a better understanding of how we would uh get to this strategy and how, how you would be able to measure whether you're um obtaining that or not. So then sense of community, again, has the same goal um of being an inclusive community that celebrates the past and we would encourage um residents to participate fully in social, cultural and economic um uh life of the community. Um, and then also to embrace and celebrate the community's diversity and respect um for differences in race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, age, abilities and beliefs. So we wanna make sure that you have a community for all, um and that there's uh, that it's celebrated for all. Um, and that, that'll help you um continue to preserve that welcoming and inclusive community. So then looking at your unique attractions, um how do you, how do you uh include those in and preserve those um to be that welcoming community? Um, we've identified that you expand unique attractions and amenities in Leavenworth to draw residents downtown and promote tourism. And, and that would be it for, for community identity. Um, so then going quickly through built environment, this includes um housing, neighborhoods, transportation, mobility, um infrastructure. Um, and, and so looking at this, the goal for um neighborhoods and housing is Leavenworth will be a place that attracts and supports a wide range of population groups in diverse neighborhoods that will, are well-maintained, clean, safe and effectively um functioning. Um, we look at this, um again, going back to that share of the county's population, um looking at maintaining that or increasing that, um is how you will be able to attract individuals to your community um and, and be sure that you're having a wide range of population. You wanna increase the variety of housing types and sizes and price points. Um, and then you also wanna look at um improving the condition of deteriorating houses, uh making neighborhoods safer and more desirable. Um, this comes from a lot of the feedback that we heard online and also um in our community meeting. We heard um over and over that uh there's concerns with the, the amount of deteriorating housing, um just maintenance, um code enforcement. Um, so, so we really took a look at that and how that can be improved. Um, and how, how doing those things can also then um increase the attractiveness of, of your community to, to future residents. Um, and then just in- increasing the occupancy rate of the existing housing market. So then looking at mo- mobility, we wanna better connect people within our city and the region with a complete transportation system, offering a variety of different transportation modes. Um, we can do this through providing a modern ta- transportation system that's connected, safe and efficient. Um, invest in sustainable roadways, uh wide sidewalks, long thoroughfares and recreational trails. Um, and then the second goal for mobility would be to improve the transportation system, to increase access um to employment opportunities, particularly among populations that may have, um may not have personal vehicles. We understand that transportation within Leavenworth is a, a big concern. That was another um large issue that we, we identified um off the bat, but also that we heard repeatedly from individuals is that um, you know, the, the modes of transportation are very limited within the community, um that you have an aging population who um now need to travel further for healthcare services. Um, and how do they get there? Um, how do the lower-income residents um traverse about the community also when um, you know, not only is there l- lack of uh public transit, but also just sidewalk gaps and um infrastructure that is deteriorating, making it difficult for individuals to safely walk from one place to the, to another? Um, so evolving the transportation system to take advantage of new technologies, looking at what that looks like. Um, that could include uh just, you know, more of a smart grid system, looking at your signaling options, um uh lighting, um et cetera, just to make sure that that transportation system's improved and um, and accessible for all. And then ensuring the areas with high job density are accessible to employers. Again, just how, how do, not only your aging traverse to healthcare, but also how does your workforce get around within your community? Um, or outside of the community? Cause there's a large population of individuals who are um commuting out of Leavenworth. And so um, you know, what, what modes of travel can they use to, to ensure that they can get to their, their employers? Looking at infrastructure and utilities, um invest in Leavenworth to promote growth, revitalization and high quality of life for all. Um, maintaining, uh we look at this by maintaining the infrastructure and invest in it to support growth. Um, upgrading s- uh design standards for uh future developments um to have sustainable aspects within it, um for water quality and um infrastructure and green infrastructure. Um, and then applying technologies um to utility improvements. Um, also uh this allows projects that are more technology-based to be attracted to the community, um lending into the uh drive for and desire to have more uh tech, trade, uh related jobs within the community. So then looking at public facilities, um these are anything that uh, th- this is the city hall, the library, um parks. Um, how are those maintained? So looking at providing natural spaces and facilities for active living is the goal. And uh we're looking at increasing in energy efficiency um to maintain the existing buildings, but also in future developments, uh looking at what um e- energy efficiencies can be used there to make sure that um uh they're, they're being sustainable and uh won't require a lot of maintenance costs um in the future. Um, providing high-quality facilities um and services for uh future residents um with the workforce and businesses. Um, and then leveraging the t- technology to improve facility management and operations. And then another goal for public facilities is to maintain a reliable and sustainable infrastructure. Um, this kinda ties into the previous goal and other strategies, um but it's just really ensuring that the public facilities and spaces um are equally distributed within the community, that um we really wanna try and focus on that ten-minute walk. Um, and we'll hit that more also in the recreation piece of it. But, you know, making sure that the, your parks are located um and distributed without, within your community so that everyone has the opportunity to walk to a park and that they're not having to drive. Um, we call it a ten-minute walk. We want, we want people to be able to have those amenities um within just, you know, a, a reach for them um and not have to travel very far um to, to access those. And then the last piece of the built environment is looking at the community and parent, appearance. Um, just developing a vibrant community that's a welcoming image and attractive physical appearance. Um, and the biggest part of this is just really making sure that you provide attractive gateways. Uh, we identified, you know, the, the southern gateway um where K-seven um is and then also your, your Fourth Street in Metropolitan, um just they're, they're lacking in that gateway presence, um wayfinding signage, things like that. And that was a big uh thing we heard also from the community is just that the community appearance also, going back to not, not only um the, the gateway piece of it, but just looking at uh, again, the maintenance of the houses, um streetscaping, uh things like that. Um, and, and making sure that those improvements are made. Uh, making sure that there's um a, a fluid uh streetscape from Metropolitan down Fourth to your downtown area. That's one thing that we heard is that um, you know, individuals from the fort do like to come down and enjoy a downtown area, but you know, there is that disconnect. It seems like that there's the fort and then there's this section in between and then downtown. So really enhancing that, that streetscape along Fourth um is a focus. And then moving into chapter three, which is harmony with nature. Looking at natural resources and sustainability, um just looking at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, um making sure that um energy and water usage is and the increase of renewable energy and um items are mitigated, that climate uh, climate-related impacts are mitigated. Um, so providing recreational and educational resources that promote a healthy lifestyle. And then looking at sustainability, um, oh, I apologize. Um, restore, connect and protect um natural habitats and sensitive lands and waterways. Um, just uh making sure that you're preserving the, the natural resources that you have, um stabilizing the floodplains and creeks and riverbeds, and then also planning for climate change. So then we move into chapter four, which is the resilient economy, um looking at the um economic activity in the workforce. Um, Leavenworth, the goal is Leavenworth aspires to be a place that attracts progressive and sound private enterprises uh by offering affordable housing, uh affordable living and high-quality workforce and business resources to help nurture the, and support a thriving, sustainable economy. Uh, we look at doing this through encouraging um a community-based economic development and revitalization, um expanding the workforce development programs and technical um education. revitalization, expanding the workforce development programs and technical education. And then, the second goal for workforce would be to maintain a diverse and valuable tax base, and we can do this by encouraging professional, scientific, and technology labor sectors. This has been identified as one of the largest sectors for the region. Currently, Leavenworth's largest sector, of course, by no surprise, would be federal, civilian, or public administration sectors. However, closely behind that is healthcare services and then the professional and science tech. So, a big emphasis is to really start trying to attract and incentivize those individuals within that sector to come to Leavenworth and pull from the region as the KC Metro sees an influx of the science and tech sector. So then, healthy community. This is public health and well-being, supporting a healthy community by promoting healthy development, healthy behaviors, and well-being for people of all, for all people in all stages of life. Provide recreational and educational resources to promote that lifestyle. Remove any barriers to physical and mental healthcare. And again, those are things that were a top priority, we heard, is just for the healthy community, really looking at your healthcare services, your public safety, but then a large focus on your recreation and leisure piece of it, which I'll talk about here in a minute. But just how all three of those really start to develop the quality of life for all the people within your community, and how you ensure that they are having healthy development in the future. And so, public safety, create an environment which the people and the visitors of Leavenworth feel safe by providing an outstanding and effective fire, police, and other emergency services. Continue to reduce the city's crime rate, which is trending down. However, we did find that your crime rate is currently higher than the state of Kansas. So, we want to make sure that we're focusing on, you know, what that is, what the causes are for that, and how to reduce that. You know, and make sure that your public safety departments are able to recruit and retain personnel. We are seeing a trend where it's more difficult for some public safety individuals to recruit the millennial generation to the public safety sector, and just how do you appeal that to them, and then also have them retain within the community? And then, just bettering those relationships with the city's police and the community that they serve, just to make sure that, you know, there is that understanding and relationship between the residents and also the public safety, just so when issues do arise, there's methods to reduce any issues, and then also just to better that relationship just in general. And then, continue to provide high-quality protection and emergency services through the fire. We did find that you all have an excellent fire department. Your response time is in line with the national rating. There are desires to reduce that a bit more, but the fire protection is running fairly well with what the national requirements are. And then, looking at recreation and leisure, create a community that celebrates welcomes and supports recreational amenities. You can do this by increasing your resident and visitor participation in community events, increasing your green space and open space, resident and visitor use of parks and recreational amenities, and also the proximity to the recreational amenities. So again, that 10-minute walk that I spoke about earlier. And then, getting into land use. This is where we really start to look at your current land use, and so you have those maps in front of you, just so that you can see a larger view of it than what's on the screen. Currently, you have 7,206 acres, and this shows that the largest percentage of your land use is single-family residential, followed by the green, which is a conservation and open space, then semi-public uses, and then you've got about 690 acres that is vacant or undeveloped. And then, commercial, you've got about 6.4% of your community is commercial, followed by parks, industrial, and multifamily. And so then, the map also just shows that breakdown by parcel. And then, just kind of a quick overview, so then that breaks down, so you've got about, you have about 95% of Leavenworth is developed, 680 acres remain undeveloped. Within your, within your community, you have about 5% of all of your acreage is within a floodplain. And then, you're just looking at development. For 2019, at the time, this was the most recent data, Julie may be able to say if it's increased or decreased in 2020, but residential permits had declined from the previous year. Again, not significantly. The number of family, multifamily units was down 95%, but the residential permits were not significantly down. And then, you did have three permits that were commercial, one industrial, and then two for schools. So you do have development taking place, but we do want to look at how do we, how do we increase that for you, and what uses are those with that increased development? Which brings us to the future land use. This is what we have proposed as the future land use map. You'll see here, a significant portion of it is single-family residential. One thing that we have added to it from the current land use is the pink you'll see there, which identifies as mixed use. A good portion of that is in the downtown area. It's the idea to encourage commercial uses on the lower portion of your buildings, and then have residential of some sort above. Looking at putting that along Eisenhower a little bit, sprinkled in with the mostly commercial, desire for Eisenhower to be commercial in conjunction with the industrial that is already existing for the tech park. And then, you'll see here that all of the 690 acres of vacant undeveloped has been removed, and so we're looking at what that increases from the current to the future, which leads me to the next slide. So, the pie chart on the right is future, so it shows what your existing land use is on your left, again, and then what that future land use map translates to in terms of buildout. Again, you'll still have the largest percentage nearly doubling your acres in single-family residential, but flip-flopping to moving public semi-public area up, reducing your conservation and open space, increasing your commercial by just under 100 acres, increasing your parks just by a little bit, because we did, as you'll see on the map, we included some park locations identified in the downtown area to continue to give that open space, gathering spaces, really try to, a big portion of what we heard in the recreational amenities and, you know, preserving your historic resources is getting people downtown, making it a destination, making it so people want to gather there, not just shop and leave. And so, adding parks in that area will help with that. And then, a slight increase in multifamily, and as I said, addition of that mixed use. And we can come back to that in just a minute, but just looking at, the overall goal for land use is to promote growth and development that's sustainable, responsible, and meets the needs of the future generations. You can do this by increasing infill residential development appropriate to the character of the neighborhood, looking at annexing, but only when the additional land outside the city limits fully funds the city funding required for the infrastructure that's provided with it. You want to be fiscally sustainable with any annexations, so keeping that in mind. And then, ensuring that the balance of land use mix create, there's a balance of land use mix, but also that it creates and preserves the varied unique characters throughout your community. And then, lastly, this is included in this larger packet that you have, just all of the policy and code adjustments for each chapter and what those would be. So, and with that, I will open it up for discussion and any questions. And I'll go back to, I assume the questions will be a little focused around land use. We'd like to hear your thoughts on that, so I'll go back to this slide for now, but...
Well, thank you very much. You certainly have done yeoman work on our behalf. We appreciate that. Commissioners, any questions?
I have one. If you give a test on this, I want to make sure I have all my notes. I get to use my notes for all this. You give us a test. You alluded to a lot of times affordable housing, and that's critical, I think, in so many things. But where I live here in Leavenworth, I've had people move in close by to me, and they moved from California and paid $325,000, and California's $800,000. I've had friends move by me, Overland Park, they paid $450,000, they're paying $325,000. I'm just trying to put that in perspective. So, even tonight, we approved and recommended some new housing that's going to be $325,000 plus. We keep building stuff in Leavenworth, in my opinion, what I see is $300,000 plus. So, my question, I keep saying this, we're affordable living, affordable living housing, and certainly the economy's great for that with the interest rates and all that. But if I were to ask you, you know, that's up to builders, you know, unless the city council or someone goes, someone said, "Please, please, please, build us $150,000, $200,000 houses." So what would you say is the economic impact of if they, people who have built more $150,000, $200,000 houses, and people could afford to buy those? What would you see the positive economic impact of that?
Sure. So, you know, no matter what the price of a house is, it doesn't, you know, just because it's $150,000 does not mean that it's, you know, not a quality house that you don't have, you know, that it's low-income only and that it's not going to be maintained, and, you know, so I think, I think attracting developers who can provide that more affordable house helps you retain the current population that you do have through St. Mary. You know, they're going to be able to remain within the community, you know. It's also going to attract the employers. You can start to really attract employers to the community, and then within that return, individuals and those employees are not going to necessarily look to go to Missouri or down to Lansing or, you know, outside of your city limits to be able to stay within, you know, a 15, 20-minute drive of their employer. So I think, you know, making sure that you can have more affordable housing, that your residents aren't spending over 30% of their income on a house will, one, attract more people to live here, it will bring in more jobs, it will attract that ability to have, like I said, more businesses in your downtown area. So really looking at, then also employers that can provide the wage that's needed for that, for that income or that housing need is important also.
Thank you, thank you.
And within the local actions, we do identify that of, you know, the what, how affordable housing is necessarily, that, you know, there is this concern about when you say affordable housing, what that really truly means, and, you know, we're looking at it on a cost burden perspective, instead of, you know, low income necessarily or subsidized housing. We're looking at it in the sense of that we're trying to get as many people within your community not to be spending that 30% or more of their income on just housing, so that they're not cost burdened. You know, and we lay out some local actions of what that'll include, you know, how to attract those developers, how to interact those employers, so that it all comes together and you can start to get that economic base, so.
In hearing all that, we have to, in Leavenworth, compete with the Kansas City businesses, the Kansas City markets. We see that in healthcare quite often, is we can't pay the same amount as St. Luke's, KU.
Sure.
So, obviously, that's thought through in a part of this plan, attracting those organizations that can compete to keep people here to pay less for the housing thus.
Right.
Making 20, 30, and beyond much better for us and fill in the yellow spaces.
Sure.
We also have a very large stock of older homes, and the recent trend toward renovation and things like that has benefited our city a lot. You can tell that by just driving down Spruce Street. I moved here a little over 20 years ago, and Spruce Street was terribly run down east or west from Fourth to 20th Street. And it's really dusted itself off and picked itself up, and there've been a lot of homes that have been renovated, and just are in generally being better kept up. And we still have a large supply of homes where that can happen, and it will be, it will benefit the city to be able to keep that, that cost of living down, because it attracts people.
Yes, and that's something we look at too, is just maintaining that character. You know, I spoke about, you know, the potential for infill housing, but, you know, you want to make sure that what you do put in there will still go with the character of the neighborhood. So, really looking at your design guidelines, your policies there, and how future development can impact the economic piece of your community, and really get those rooftops in here and fill in the yellow, as you mentioned, but also still making sure that you don't lose that historic piece, and that those big, beautiful homes aren't, you know, demolished or, you know, not maintained. So finding how to have future development, but also that historic piece of it and weaving it together to make sure that everything is cohesive in that respect of the character areas.
Yeah, this, and my concern along with all of that is, you know, looking at the amount of agriculture and green space that's taken away and brought in the future land use. I want to keep, not I, but I think it would be ideal. We don't want to turn, the old saying, concrete jungle, we don't want to turn Leavenworth into a Kansas City junior. So, I, you know, it's a great plan and everything, it's just, I think we, Leavenworth's known for its hometown appeal, and that's going to play a big part in Leavenworth's future. That's just something to think about, too.
Sure. And so, one thing that is to consider, within all of the single-family residential there, we've written in a local action that would require all future developments to require a certain amount of green space and open space, so that, yes, it's all yellow on this map, but when... So that, yes, it's all yellow on this map, but when, in retrospect, if you went and did it as a land use map and looked at what your actual current land uses are by parcel, some of those then would be green still because we want to make sure that you're not losing that. And so what that does is it's twofold, is it does conserve spaces, but it also then in turn gives you that recreational accessibility and walkability to nearby parks for your future developments also.
Commissioners at home? Can't see them, but...
Oh, I can, I guess minimize so I can, we can see.
I want to thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I've prepared future land use plans before, and you did a wonderful job.
So is there... I know Julie and I kind of wanted to hit on just the future of Metropolitan a bit. Currently, a lot of it is single-family residential, with obviously the larger area right there by the gateway is more commercial. But, you know, I just wanted to get your thoughts on, is that something that you all see maintaining as residential, or is there a desire for that to evolve into more commercial or maybe a mixed use? Again, because the southern gateway along Eisenhower and K7, you know, the desire there is to have more commercial, you know, is that something that's warranted on the north end also?
Yeah, we're starting to see some of those more rundown houses along Metropolitan be removed, and so, you know, what do we want to see Metropolitan become going forward as, you know, we start losing those houses just through attrition? And, you know, do we want to encourage people to rebuild single-family homes there? Do we want to encourage something else?
Yeah, in my opinion, I can't speak on behalf of everyone, but as we improve those gateways, one, when the bridge becomes an attractive gateway to our city, homes being out of that, businesses being there, you put hotels at the corner, the more that excels and explodes over time, I think then you'll get that back and forth, and you'll have people from Platte City perhaps camping here versus going across the river to live. And then the next thing is, there is a plan to put a highway from 7 to 435 at some point, correct? On the, between Lansing and...
Yeah, I believe there's some, yeah, longer-term plans for that.
Connecting corridors, connecting highways to what we're doing, so maybe improvements on 92 Highway would have to come into play as well.
Right.
So my opinion is, the houses that are rundown, run down to grass and then rebuilt with nice business, not more on...
I mean, we have a bit of a problem getting businesses to come to Leavenworth, so...
True, true.
I mean, that should be the goal, but until that point, I think we should, you know, either leave them green or, you know, do what we can to encourage house, home building.
Another point to that, too, I mean, if we do go commercial, make it usable, to usable business up on that north end because there's some areas, there's some needs on the north commercial-wise that I think should probably be or could be addressed as attrition, you know.
If you don't mind, since I live off 20th, but crossing the river, coming across Metropolitan with all the future growth of the new prison being built, and with the existing businesses there and people going across the river, going to Atchison, you got to have people going across Metropolitan, going to 20th Street, coming around Leavenworth. It's a major movement point, in my opinion, and so therefore, businesses that are built there, since it's such a major movement area with people, might would stop there because there's so much traffic going in that direction. And I think that's why the future of that, in my opinion, would be more commercial-related than business, than private, the housing that are there. They will sooner or later come out, and businesses will go on those spots. It's great real estate value, it's visibility.
Yep, I would agree with that. We had talked about, you know, turning it more commercial with maybe a note or two that would be mixed use. That way you are still, you know, having those rooftops in a sense there also. You know, as you said, you know, people are going to be hopefully moving from the Platte City area over this way more, and, you know, they may, they want to, may want to live more in proximity to the north, too. So, you know, if you are losing those single-family rooftops, then consider how to maybe still allow to have some of that in place up there, so.
If you don't mind, a couple of my friends have the Barista Coffee Shop here in town, and they did a study of how much traffic flows a day through there when they put the Barista Coffee Shop in, which is now Scooters. And it's astronomical amount of thousands of traffic that goes there. So you take the people coming from the fort going east or west, the traffic flow there, the movement there, of people going from the fort heading out there, heading west, even turning to 10th or 20th Street, it's astronomical, going the other way. But the main thing is if they turn and go to the west on Metropolitan there, I mean, a nice, Metropolitan rather, it's incredible movement, incredible visibility for a business on that.
And we've got so much traffic on Metropolitan, and we've got the new development there, 7th, it was right across from the front gate, and so, you know, with the new prison, you know, that's going to be built in the next, you know, number of years. And so, you know, how to kind of capitalize on that amount of traffic up there and what sort of services would be beneficial, you know, yeah, is it food services and, you know, retail and that type of thing? You know, I would think that, you know, we certainly have pretty high traffic counts along Metropolitan that aren't decreasing in any way, so.
So what's the way ahead from here?
So we can revise the land use map, it sounds like from there to, you know, look at the Metropolitan corridor as more of commercial, so we can revise that. And then I'm actually meeting with City Commission tomorrow to provide them all very similar information that we've discussed this evening. With that edit, I can make that for them tomorrow. And then our next step would be to just move it towards adoption, as long as you don't have any other edits or comments or concerns with what we've proposed, so.
I would like to know more on the green space being included with developers' plans because I love that. You stole it from me, you're good to talk about it. But yeah, all these new communities, there's one going up that we just spoke on tonight, what's the green space plan for those so that we keep some of the park, the attractiveness, houses not on top of each other?
Right.
That's important to me.
And so like Shelby mentioned, that's one of the recommendations that's in here. A lot of cities do have those types of requirements for new residential developments, that a certain percentage of the land be devoted to green space and amenities and that type of thing, and we just really don't have that right now. So developers can take, you know, if they've got 25 acres, they can make the whole thing single-family lots, which, you know, is fine, but then you're missing out on the opportunity for, you know, the public green space. And they may be large lots, and so it's not going to be, you know, the concrete jungle that's all paved, but that's still not amenities for the public or the residents to enjoy. So that is definitely something that I've thought about even prior to this, and so it's, yeah, good to see that coming forward as a recommendation to, you know, to look at moving forward.
One thing that you have to offset with on, when you're looking at development and the annexation to provide area for development as opposed to using infill, is that we have a major block to the west between County Road 5 and north of Shawnee, where if we want, we can't really annex that way because in order to provide services, utilities in that area would require major expensive improvements of substations and things like that to be able to provide just basics of sewer and water. And that type of thing would be very expensive, and I think that'll push the drive to do infill development.
Yeah, I mean, you still have a good amount of real estate remaining, and then also looking at your infill piece of it, you know, to be able to take advantage of that before really needing to annex, you know, especially looking at what the population projections, you know, and housing projections are for the next 10, 20 years. You know, you should be able to provide that within, you know, what you currently have and not need to spend, you know, millions in infrastructure for annexation, you know, to consider annexation pieces. So, you know, it's good to think future forward for sure in where and how Leavenworth can grow and where it needs to grow, but I agree. I mean, you definitely want to look at your infill piece of it before you start annexing anything, so.
Can I have an opportunity for the two commissioners at home?
So do I need to?
It's gonna have to sign my wudgin.
Are they still there?
I think I saw Sherri Lee.
There he is.
Still got James. Oh, and we got Sheila on, too.
From what I'm just hearing, Chairman, is it appropriate that we, the Planning Commission, then make a recommendation to the city commissioners that on the future land use on Metropolitan that we recommend that it be looked at for businesses versus residential?
So what you could do tonight, for this to move forward, the Planning Commission has to provide a consensus to move forward with the comprehensive plan. So what you could do tonight is provide that consensus with the changes that we've discussed with, you know, identifying Metropolitan as more of a commercial corridor. And then, like Shelby said, the City Commission is looking at it again tomorrow night, and then Shelby and her team will kind of get that all wrapped up with changes discussed here and with the City Commission. And so if you provide your consensus tonight to move forward with it with those changes, then it can just go ahead and go straight to adoption with the City Commission instead of coming back here in May. Or if you'd prefer to have it come back here in May to look at again, that's fine, too. You know, that's kind of up to you guys, how you want to move forward with that, but those would be your policies.
I think the final product is a joint meeting with the Planning and the City Commission anyways.
Yep, and like we had mentioned, we can certainly do that and make, when it goes for adoption, have it be a joint meeting and have the Planning Commission invited to that as well.
So do we do a motion and second and vote, or do we just say we all agree that we...
No, consensus would just be the majority of the members agree to move forward with it, and then we'll keep it going.
Anybody not want it to go forward? So then we're all in agreement, I believe, and we have consensus to move forward with the plan with additions that we've talked about with regards to Metropolitan Street.
Yep.
Good.
And we'll see what the City Commission can do with it. Great, so any other official business?
Nothing tonight. We do have a May meeting. Yep, it'll be a long one. We've got six items on that agenda, so.
Bring it.
All right. So in which case I adjourn today's meeting. If you want to go ahead and stop the recording, we can say what we, I mean, we can...